Okay, everybody ready? We'll call to order the Board of County Commissioners for Washoe County for January 15th, 2019, and we'll start by a salute to the flag. I don't see anybody who wants to do this. Yeah, I was just gonna say, somebody behind him raised his hand, but Robert Chisel, will you lead us in a salute to the flag? Thank you very much.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Chisel. And thank you whoever it was that raised your hand right behind him. I appreciate that. With that, we will go to the county clerk for roll call. Madam Clerk.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Marcia Burke Bigler, Chair.
Here.
Vice Chair Kitty Jung.
Present.
Bob Lucy is absent. Von Hartung.
Present.
Jeanne Herman.
Here.
County Manager John Slaughter.
Present.
I'm Paul DiPirelli, Assistant District Attorney.
Here.
I'm Nancy Parent, County Clerk. You have a quorum, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And with that, we will go to the new employee introduction. Mr. Manager.
Yes, item three on the agenda is our introduction of our new employees. So, as is our custom, commissioners will come down to greet the employees, and employees will line up, give us a second to get down. Employees will come down and introduce themselves and their department.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners and Mr. Manager. My name is Janet Prestapino. I am a Public Administrator Specialist with the Public Administrators Office.
Nice to meet you. Welcome. Thank you. Congratulations.
Good morning, and thank you for the invite. My name is April Ramage. I am with the Community Services Department. I am in the Operations Division, and I am the Facilities Contract and Services Supervisor.
Welcome. Nice to meet you. It's kind of a big deal. It's a big one. Wow.
Good morning. I'm Sabrina Reeves. I'm with the Washoe County District Attorney's Office and the Records Department.
Welcome. Nice to meet you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you, everybody. We're so happy to have new employees always, and certainly happy to have the top three from, I know, some very competitive positions. So, thank you. And with that, we will go to item number four, Mr. Manager.
Madam Chair, members of the board, item four is our recognition of employees who have completed Excellence in Public Service Certificate Programs. Washoe County encourages lifelong learning and the professional development of all of our employees administered by the Human Resources Department. Excellence in Public Service is a series of certificate programs designed to support employee development and performance. The completion of these courses over a two-year period demonstrates the employees' commitment to continuous personal and professional improvement and to Washoe County's journey of excellence, and today, we are very pleased to recognize that commitment. Our first recipient is Erica Bauer, Personal Property Auditor, Appraiser for the Assessors' Office. Erica has completed the Essentials of Management Development Certificate Program. Congratulations to Erica. Next, we have Brenna Bowle, Legal Secretary for the District Attorney's Office, and Brenna has completed the Essentials of Support Staff Certificate. Congratulations.
Thank you. That'd be great.
Next is Jessica Cabralis, Office Support Specialist for the Health District, and Jessica has completed the Essentials of Personal Effectiveness Certificate Program. Next is Mia Cholico, Legal Secretary for the District Attorney's Office, and Mia has completed the Essentials of Personal Effectiveness, Essentials of Support Staff, and Essentials of High-Performing Team Certificate Programs, and the Promote Yourself Mini Certificate Program. Mia's been busy. Congratulations. Good job. That's quite a few. Next is Joey Gregory Hart, Account Clerk Two for the Treasures Office, and Joey has completed the Promote Yourself Mini Certificate Program.
Thank you. Nice to see you. Congratulations.
Next is Pamela Larson, Library Assistant Three for the Library, and Pamela has completed the Essentials of High-Performing Teams Certificate Program. Congratulations. Next is Pamela Mattson, Account Clerk Two for the Comptroller's Office. Pamela has completed the Essentials of High-Performing Team Certificate Program. Next is Crystal Thumer, Legal Secretary for the District Attorney's Office, and Crystal has completed the Essentials of Personal Effectiveness Certificate Program. Daniel Timmons, Air Quality Specialist for the Health District, has completed the Promote Yourself Mini Certificate Program. And Mike White, Storekeeper for the Health District, has completed the Essentials of Support Staff Certificate Program. Congratulations to Mike.
Thank you, every one of you, for all the effort and time you put into this county. We appreciate it so much. You're the reason the county is as successful as it is, all these great employees that we have. So, thank you very much for that. And with that, we will move on to item number five when Mr. Manager gets back to his seat and his microphone. Mr. Manager.
Yes, item. Item five is an appearance by Kaye Bromley, who is General Counsel and Partner with Community Ventures. This is a presentation and an update on Opportunity Zones in Nevada.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having me. So, I was asked to give you guys a kind of a high-level overview of Opportunity Zones, but feel free to ask me any questions, and we can deep dive, because I know everyone has different level of understanding about what they are. So, just to start, what are Opportunity Zones? Opportunity Zones were designated as part of the 2017 Tax Bill. It's a bipartisan bill. The reason I say that is because some people decide they hate it or love it, just because they say it's the Trump Tax Bill, or this or that. It was actually introduced by Representatives Scott and Booker, so it is bipartisan. The point of it is it's an incentive program to incentivize investors to invest long-term into low-income and rural communities, and there's 8,700 of these zones designated across the country. And there's, again, there's lots of misinformation. It's not what you and I necessarily might think of as low-income and rural. It's based on Census Trac data, and there's different areas, like the whole Oakland Raiders Stadium is all an Opportunity Zone. There's some really desirable communities that are Opportunity Zones. But then there's also places that probably would not be getting dollars in development without this designation. So, it runs both sides of the gamut. Here's the map of the 8,700, like the whole island of Puerto Rico is an Opportunity Zone. So, there's lots of areas all over. The good thing for us in Washoe County is that the Opportunity Zones are places that we have developers looking anyway, so it's an added incentive for growth in our community. Now, the reason that I'm here in front of you speaking is I started a task force along with EDON, and we brought together people from the county, Sparks, Reno, and then we have some developers, blockchains as part of it, we've got EDON as part of it, like I said, Governor's Office, and we brought people together to educate on the Opportunity Zone, educate on what the incentives are, and what we can be doing as communities to, you know, take advantage of this and make sure that the developers that are coming in are aligned with what you guys want to do with these areas. Analysts are saying that there is, and here's a blown-up version of just Reno Sparks, you can see all of Tric is an Opportunity Zone downtown Reno. Now, the way that the lines were designated, this is all done, it's not going to change, maybe ever, but at least not for 10 years. So, the way that these were drawn, like I said, was based on Census Trac data. Analysts are saying there's something like $6 trillion that could come into play. No one realistically thinks it's going to be that much, but they do think it's going to be hundreds of billions that could come into play, and I'll talk to you about why that is. So, it's a really high level. The Opportunity Zone Program does three things. For investors that have capital gains, it allows them a temporary deferral on the original capital gain. It allows them a step-up in basis, or if you're not a CPA like me, it's a discount. That's not a CPA term at all, but it's a discount on what the original capital gain they would pay, and then there's a permanent exclusion, and I'll go into that in more detail. So, first, the investor realizes a capital gain. So, for example, let's say I bought $1 million in Apple stock. I sold it for $3 million. That means I have a $2 million capital gain. I can either pay tax on that at the rate of about 24%, or I can invest it in an Opportunity Zone. So, you can see, even before I get into the details of what this looks like, this is why there's so much money that is pouring into this, because these investors are going to pay tax on this, or they're going to invest in your communities and get these incentives. So, that's why there's, if you Google this or have a Google alert, every day, there's a new fund. Chicago, just someone in Chicago raised $150 million in 24 hours. Goldman Sachs just raised two $500 million funds. I mean, the money is just pouring in, and what's happening is, as people are getting their K1s and realizing, oh, I have this big capital gain I've got to pay tax on, they're figuring this out, and then they're saying, they're looking for deals to put their money in. So, that's what's happening across the country right now. So, they get the capital gain, and then they have 180 days to put it into an Opportunity Zone Fund. Now, that's where it gets really tricky, because sometimes entitlements and things can take a long time, but they have to do this within 180 days. And sometimes, they're not going to find out they got the capital gain until within that 180-day period, so then there's the scramble. So, the biggest deals that are going to happen are going to be shovel-ready projects that are ready to go. So then, once they have the 180 days, they have to put it in a real estate, in either a piece of real estate or a business, inside an Opportunity Zone. It has to be physically located in an Opportunity Zone. Real estate is the low-hanging fruit. That's what we're going to see the most of, but businesses, we're going to see more and more of those as the regs get finalized. So, the IRS has not given us the final regs. They gave some proposed regs. We did some hearings. Now, with the shutdown, the hearings were delayed. So, we're still waiting on final regs. That's going to clarify how the business piece of it works, but we know most of it. So, how it works is you can't, once the investor buys the project or puts the money into the Opportunity Zone, they can't just sit on it. They have to actually substantially improve it. That's why it's good for, you know, from the county and from the city side, that's what's good for us, is that they have to actually improve it, they have to spend money on the business. So, for example, if it's a piece of real estate that's valued at $1 million five, if the land is worth a million, the building's worth five, they have to put another five into it. So, this does actually, they can't just buy stuff and sit on it. So, after year five, so remember I said there's a deferral period of that original capital gain? There's a 10% step-up in basis after five years, and another 5% total, 15% after seven years. So, in other words, if someone can hold the piece of property or business for seven years, they can pay up to 85% of the taxes, so a 15% discount on the original capital gain. So, that's the first incentive that people are talking about. The thing that's important for you guys to know about that is that deferral period ends at the end of 2026. So, there's going to be a massive tax event at the end of 2026, where everyone who did this is going to pay the capital gains less any reductions on that original investment. But where it gets really big, and why people are just going crazy over this, is if an investor holds their investment for 10 years, then they pay zero capital gains once they sell it. And I wrote out an example, just to, because it's easier to understand. So, let's say I took that $2 million capital gain, and I put it into a piece of real estate in Reno. After five years, I get a 10% discount on that original capital gain. After seven years, I get a total of 15%. Then, let's say, I sell it at year 11, and that original $2 million, I sell it for $3 million. I pay zero capital gain on that, because there's a complete 100% step-up in basis. So, that's why investors, so I tell you that, just so you understand, there's a lot of misinformation about what it means. People think it's this big money grab, and money's coming. It's not that easy to do one of these deals, because the deal still has to pencil, it has to make sense, and being an Opportunity Zone doesn't make it make sense, it still has to be a good deal. But this is why, this is why people are so excited about this. And then I put in there, too, that the December 31st tax event, everyone will be paying their original capital gains there. So, the other two points I just want to point out is that, one of the other things that you're going to hear about is this rush, that everyone's got to do it before the end of 2019. That's because the way the math works, in order to get the full seven years in by 2026, you have to have done it by the end of 2019. So, that's where this rush is coming from. But it doesn't, it just means that they can't get the full 15% if they don't do it by then. So, they can still do it up till after 2026, they just won't get the full deferral and exemption of that. And then I already said that it still has to be a good deal. The other thing I want to tell you about is, I explained about the task force. What we're about is bringing people together, educating them, bringing the developers, the funds, and the deals together. I'm part of a group that is starting a fund for Reno Sparks, and the purpose of that is because a lot of the money is going to places like New York City and LA and Puerto Rico. It's a hotspot right now, and we really wanted to make sure that some of that money comes here, and so that's what we're doing, and we're working with Holland and Hart to put that together. And I don't know if any of you were there, but there was a big conference that was held in Vegas around Thanksgiving. It was attended by about 400 people. The Governor's Office was part of it. It was pretty, it was pretty amazing, and it was before we really knew everything about what was going on. We know a lot more now, so we're putting on a Northern Nevada Conference in February, but then we just, it might not be till March, but blockchains, Tesla, Google are all participating. The Governor's Office is sponsoring this with us, and so we'll keep you guys all informed, because we're going to do a session about sharing best practices, what other communities are doing, because there's some communities that are doing a lot to help support this and be part of the planning, rather than developers coming and saying, we want to do this, having you guys as part of the voice, saying, this is what we want to happen in our community. So, if you have any questions, you can ask me now, or reach out to me later, but...
Thank you very much, Ms. Bromley. We appreciate you. This is very interesting, and I agree, really good for our community. I don't have a Commissioner signed in. Does anybody have a, you're not signed in on my request to speak? But go right ahead and speak, Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize for the technical issue. On the investments, are there pools, or do you physically have to, you know, put up all the money yourself? So, in other words, are there blocks of money where, let's just say I have, you know, $100,000 instead of millions of dollars, but I want to be part of an Opportunity Zone, is it possible to invest as a block investor, as it were?
Yeah, yeah. So, the word "fund" in this legislation is kind of a term of art. They say "fund," but really, if you wanted to go buy a piece of property, and it was in an Opportunity Zone, at the end of the year, you would have your CPA fill out one form, and it would be a self-certifying fund, and you can totally do that. And then you've got to hold it for 10 years to get the full benefit. So, when people are saying that they're creating these funds, because of the 180-day time period, no one's actually pooling money and...
Okay, that's my question, is if there's a pool.
So, what's happening, I've talked to a bunch of funds across the country, because I sit on some panels across the country. What they're actually doing, they're creating the framework, like the legal documents, the private placement memorandum, subscription agreement, the things that would normally be created for a pooled fund, but then they hold it, and they just take a commitment, and then they find the project. Then, when I find the project, I come to you and say, okay, Mr. Investor, you gave me the commitment.
Right, okay.
Now, we're going to put it in.
Right.
So, that's how it works. So, there could be multiple people in a project, but it's not until the project's identified that they put them together.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice Chair Jung.
Hi.
Excuse me, I have more questions. Sorry.
Calling someone else up. Sorry about that. No worries. When you say, can you operationally define for me what a substantial improvement is?
That's one of the things that we need final regs on. We know on real estate, so that was the example I gave, that if you bought a $1 million five building and land, they would value the land and the building separately, and then you would have to spend, so if it was $1 million for the land, 500 for the building, you would have to invest another 500 for the building. That one's super clear. On the business, it's not as clear, but whatever the fund is, so let's say the fund buys a restaurant, they would have to put in, they would have to spend 90% of the investment that's in whatever that fund is into improving the restaurant. So, they'd have to buy new equipment, or, you know, hood, or whatever they did to improve it. But it's not as clear when it's like, it's a technology company that is selling, you know, e-commerce. It's not really clear how that is going to work yet, so we're looking for guidance on that. The summit that we're doing, we're bringing in experts on this that know more than I do, that are going to talk about, they've been doing deals across the country, so this is all going to be about sharing best practices. And the business part of it is really the biggest way to make money, because that whole 10-year hold and zero capital gains, if you think about, like if Apple or Facebook had started in an Opportunity Zone, where, you know, whatever their basis was, when they have a sale event or some kind of event later, zero capital gains on that is just massive.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
What about bare dirt? How is that identified? So, it's the price of the bare dirt, and then...
And then a substantial improvement.
What substantial?
So, that one's an easy one. That's an easy one. So, it would be the percentage of the fund that's created. So, if I buy the dirt for, you know, $100,000, I would have to designate how much my fund is that I'm going to do as improvement. And then there's measurement periods, like every, not like, every six months, there's a measurement period by the IRS to say how much you've put in, and they've given...
Progress.
Yeah, and they've given a timeframe of 30 months to actually do the improvement, but it's not, you can't wait till the 29th month and do it. There's a measuring period every six months. So, it's vague, because we don't have the final regs yet.
Sure. And then, I've been getting phone calls from people from all over the country. Can you tell me, at this point, what would a Commissioner's role be in them calling me, saying, do you have Opportunity Zones? Can you help me identify, which we've done with the help of the County Manager? What do we do?
Yeah, I think, it's interesting, because I mentioned, there are some communities across the country who are taking a lead on this, and they're, like, they're the ones creating the task forces, like we did. If you have land that you guys want to develop, this is the time to get it done, and, you know, you're kind of, it's...
You're talking about county land?
If you have...
County-owned land?
County-owned land in an Opportunity Zone, then yeah. This is the time for you to cherry-pick the best investors and, you know, do the really big project. If you were going to do something smaller, because, at another time, but right now, this is a time to, we can reshape our community.
And you're going to help us, right, Madam?
Yes, I can help you with that.
So, I would like to have that as a, something we start working on yesterday, and if we could put together for the county, what we would do, if we have anything in the unincorporated county, and if not, how we could help, I mean, land that we, not in the unincorporated county, land that we own in an Opportunity Zone, that we may be looking for big improvements, or how's homelessness issue, et cetera. I think we should be working on that sooner rather than later, so I would like that to be a future agenda item sooner, as soon as possible, or, I don't know, yeah, it probably needs an agenda items to set some policy and some guidelines, but I think that we need to jump on that, the opportunity, so...
And you guys become even more attractive if you can make that happen before the end of 2019, which is a tall order, I realize that, but...
We can make it happen.
But literally, I talked to, I'm on a panel with a guy next week, and he raised a $100 million fund, and they're just, they're just looking for deals.
Right, right.
Across the country, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah.
I think we'll talk more.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your expertise, and I'm glad that you're living here in Reno.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll see you at Reub Urban next time.
Yes, Vice Chair Jung. Ms. Bromley, do you have a date set for the summit? Is February a day, a day?
I will confirm it with you. We're still juggling, because some speakers from blockchains just emailed me that they can't do the February, they can do the March, so we might change it to March.
Okay, so if you would make sure that we are aware of the date, so...
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Definitely.
And appreciate you being here, and all of your comments.
Thank you.
Very interesting information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
And with that, we will move to public comment. Mr. Manager.
Item six is public comment. Comment heard under this item is limited to three minutes per person, may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. Commissioner will also hear public comment during individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person, and comments are to be made to the board as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. We'll start with Ms. Tammy Holdstill.
Could we have the overhead, please? Thank you. Tammy Holdstill, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee. For the record, the water, of course, is still there. We're still here. I'm going to start off first with, I'm going to leave that up there for the moment, but one of the things, I was at the flood meeting the other night, and I've been at regional planning meetings, and it keeps coming back that Washoe County has not given the master plan, and nor are they doing their needs reports. I'm thinking that this is a very bad issue for Washoe County. You have the opportunity to get the information to the right people, so that things can be done to fix things, and instead, your staff is dragging their feet. I know it's the responsibility of the County Manager, but for some reason, it's lacking. Matt, you all know that that's happened. What you see before you right now is a letter that has gone out to, into EP, has gone out to all the people that you see listed here, by email and by certification. This talks about the affluent water of Swan Lake, the flooding of Swan Lake, and the recharge of the aquifers in the Lemon Valley Hydrological Basin, and overcharging them to the elevations that take a chance in contaminating the water. I see somebody nodding his head that it wouldn't happen. So, I have a hydrologist, or not a hydrologist, but an environmentalist by the name of Katie, who has sent you guys information like this before, that you approved Prado North and the flood mitigation for Prado North that is based on Prado South, based upon not knowing this information. There are issues. You're putting too much water in that basin. You add OHMS in there, you add Affluent in there, you recharge the aquifers, and you end up with too much water, and our residents get flooded. Washoe County needs to smarten up. It needs to be a partner in every way, shape, and form. City of Reno's trying. I sure don't see Washoe County doing it, and it saddens me, that we need to fix the situation, not sit there and keep pumping more water into an area that is flooding. It's flooding Silver Lake, it's flooding Swan Lake, and then you've got Whiteslake that's in the same boat. And then to top it off, there's a rumor going around that Washoe County plans on taking away the HESCO barriers of June this year. How can you take away something, and let's put it in just straight-out facts, you have right now what is water that is higher than it was in 2017, and yet, we're expecting rain, and there's still snow on the ground, and what happened in 2017? And you want to take the HESCO barriers away? There is an 85% chance we're going to get this again. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Irene Hagblum.
My name is Irene Hagblum, 1120730 Eaton Lane Road in Pleasant Valley. I'm talking about item 13. I have three questions on this item. Will there be mandatory hookup for this sewer? My will is close to this pipeline, and I am very concerned about contamination to my water, and I feel the sewer line should be paid for by the developers. Then I do have another letter to be read for Delia Greenhall. She is unable to attend this meeting. She is unable to attend this meeting. Just my name is Delia Greenhall, and I live at 140 Andrew Lane in Steamboat Valley. Was not able to attend today. I would like to, like this recorded into the record today. It's okay. I have been attending the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Meetings and feel that any decision on this bond would be premature due to the regional plan not being completed yet. I would like to read a quote from an article that was written in 2004 regarding the sewer interceptor. The southern extension to be built by developers will serve up to 995 homes approved on 540 acres in the south end of Pleasant Valley. This now appears to be a bond that may require tax payer's money. If this is true, will there be a hearing about this issue? Thank you.
Please, would you please provide the letter to the clerk? So she has it for the record? Thank you very much. Next is Ms. Elizabeth Gambrell. Good morning.
I'm Elizabeth Gambrell. I reside at 170 El Rancho Avenue, Gerlach, Nevada. I'm also a member of the Citizens Advisory Board for Gerlach, the Economic Development Committee, and a trustee of the GGID. I came this morning to listen to the fire report. And because I'd been advised that Gerlach was going to be mentioned in it, and I got this notification 12 hours ago. I was actually quite surprised that there's a plan in place or a plan being developed regarding Gerlach's Fire Department or Fire Protection Services, when the Citizens Advisory Board has absolutely no information, which means my citizens have no information. So I'm here to request that if Gerlach is going to be changed, added to, deleted from, resourced, that possibly the Citizens Advisory Board be advised, even though it is not a planning matter, which is what we are primarily a board for now, but we are still members of Washoe County and would like to know what is going on with our fire department. We rely on it completely. I did try and read some of the October 16th fire report, which talked about this, but the attachments were unavailable online. I couldn't pull them up to see what the dashboard items were. And I do say we have a little bit of problem with internet in Gerlach. So possibly it's my issue. But I wonder if we could possibly get copied in on anything dealing with Gerlach as a citizen advisory board, economic development committee, general improvement district. And thank you.
Much. Thank you very much. Next will be Mr. Alan Nash.
Hi, my name is Alan Nash. I live at 88 Jackson Lane in Gerlach, Nevada. I'm a member of the Gerlach Volunteer Fire Department. I came here to ask that the Gerlach Volunteer Fire Department be funded in a safe and appropriate manner. I, as a volunteer, I've had to change my used hand-me-down uniforms twice because they've become outdated. I've had to report to fires this year, to wildland fires, and pants two sizes too small because there weren't any available in my size. I'm required to do all the training that's done for the regular fire department personnel. I am a qualified EMT, a qualified wildland firefighter, and I'm going through firefighter one training, due in part to Pyramid Lake, just happened to having training going right now. But when I show up for training, I look like the third string of the junior varsity football team because everybody else is in turnouts that look appropriate, and I'm looking at dirty, used equipment. I understand that Washoe County receives millions of dollars from the federal government, in part for fire protection up in our area of the world. And I'd just like to see a little bit spent, a little bit more spent on the volunteer fire department. Back when Pat Irwin was hired as our coordinator, we felt supported, and we felt like we were doing a good thing. And now, we don't have a coordinator. We just have two firefighters that are overtaxed. And they're told they can't work on weekends, which is when lots of things happen. So I'd just like to see a little bit more thought put into the Gerlach Volunteer Fire Department and the Gerlach Fire Department in general. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nash. Next is Mr. Sam Dinae.
Sam Dinae Dinae, the heart and soul and the body and mind of Reno government. Here we are at the Washoe County Commission Meeting. And I continue to be, along with the rest of the citizens who probably don't even know it, I continue to be irritated with the fact that you put the fall deroll and the pomp and circumstance in front of the citizens who are here on their own time, come down here for public comment, and they have to sit through the pomp and circumstance and fall deroll and informational items. Public comment should be first all the time. I don't know when you change this. It is wrong. Public comment, where the citizens can come down there here on their own time. It should be first. And I think that everybody in the room here would agree with that. On top of that, all of these citizens were here getting their awards and maybe, and I'm sure they deserve them, don't get me wrong. They should have to, they should be allowed to and have to sit through and find out what the citizens are concerned about. There's, Washoe County employees, they're gone now. So they don't even know that these folks have had their houses flooded for years and years now and not corrected. I'm an Air Force Academy graduate, spent many years flying fighters and bombers, defending our nation. And then I was a pilot for Pan American World Airways, that great airline that was driven out of business, basically thrown under the bus by our own government after the Lockerbie terrorist attack. And that was a sad, sad, diabolical part of the history of America, throwing that great airline. And it's not just that I'm biased because it was my airline. It was one of the most dastardly things that was ever done in America, and it's been buried by the media and everybody else. Secondarily, Mr. Sisalak up there wants to rename the Reno Airport. I've got no problem with that, although I think it should be named the Reno Airport. So you know where you're going. If he's going to rename it, there's only one person who should have their name on that airport, and that is Sam Dinae Dinae. I've got far more credentials than the people he wants to name the airport after, flying-wise. But on top of what have I done for Reno? I've done far more for Reno than this young man, this fellow, excuse me, young man, Laxalt. He wants to name the airport after Laxalt. If he wants to name a hospital or a casino or courthouse after Laxalt, that's fine. Airport has to be Sam Dinae International Airport. Last but not least, I've dismantled the Reno Gazette. I've done a phenomenal job of dismantling the Reno Gazette. Now they've got another, they've got another quote-unquote pipsqueak coming in to run it. Then he's smiling, the guy has no background, and she's smiling. This pipsqueak coming in here does not deserve to run the Reno Gazette. Did I say something that was really funny? Is he here? I hope he's here.
Thank you, Mr. Dinae.
They're here.
Mr. Dinae, thank you very much.
Thank you for thanking me, and you're welcome.
I see no more public comments, so we'll close public comment and bring it back to the board. And with that, we'll move to item number seven. Mr. Manager.
Item seven is our Commissioner, County Managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commission updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
You have anything, Mr. Manager?
I do have two items I wanted to mention. On today's agenda item 12, I believe it is, that is the recommendation to adopt the resolution declaring Washoe County's intent to convey Washoe County School District portion of the property for Wild Creek, and setting a date. I just wanted to make the announcement now, in case there's anyone here, that we will be setting the date for February 12th for that hearing. And that really is the action of that item today, just to set that date. The second informational item I wanted to mention is I have made a request to all of our departments to provide to me information related to impacts that they possibly may be seeing, as well as impacts that citizens may be seeing related to the federal government shutdown and the funding issue. So we will be gathering that information and preparing a report that we can provide to the organization, to you, so that we can anticipate impacts that we may be seeing in the near term, as well as if this goes longer than that. So I just want to make sure that you had that information.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Vice Chair Jung.
First off, I have to let you know I have an 11 a.m. with the 5210 group for health, five vegetables and fruits, two whatever. I mean, I shouldn't say whatever, two hours of screen time, et cetera. It's at 11:00, it's our inaugural meeting. But in the interim, I would like to say that, thank you, Mr. Slaughter. The State Director for Cortez Mastos reached out to me specifically for federal workers in the Washoe County area, similar to what Clark County is doing, and if there are any abatements available for them in terms of property taxes, the late fees maybe being waived, those type of things that we have control of within our own county. I know that there are 3,500 federal workers in the state of Nevada. Obviously, the bulk of them would be in Clark County. So thank you, Mr. Slaughter. And I did, after I circled back with Mr. Slaughter and then back to her state coordinator, that Mr. Slaughter and staff had already had a meeting on the books for yesterday to go over with the department heads what, if, anything we could do. So, and I made sure to let them know, too, that you were progressive and on top of that as well. So I appreciate that. This is a global issue, and then I'm going to get really specific. I would like to have a calendar of when we're getting a website refresh. I have been getting complaints about people unable to find agendas, attachments, meetings, et cetera. And while I could tell them how to do that, I think we need to set, sit down citizens who use the website maybe once every three months so that they can tell us what works and what doesn't. I'm not a good end-user reporter, other than what complaints that come to me. So I'd like to see the calendar, what kind of money we're investing in that because best practices, really with websites, this should be a continuous improvement issue. I'm not saying you need to do it all over, but we should always be looking for areas that these can be much more accessible, considering we do much more of our citizen engagement electronically. And that parlay's into the Gerlach request for citizen engagement for their, for fire, et cetera. I do think that that is only fair. While Mr. Chief Brown, our hired lobbyist, is thinking about ideas that he meet with the citizens in Gerlach to get their feedback of what their fire department, they would like it to look like, but also what sort of funding do they have? And are they willing to put up for themselves or we can go after? And that also comes up with a question, and probably these volunteers should have been here for our earlier meeting for the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District to talk to the chief directly. And that is, a claim was made about we get millions of dollars from the feds. I want to know how much we get from the feds per year for Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District? What the intent is, and where are we spending it throughout the entire county? Because it's not just intended for those people that pay the tax for fire, as far as I understand. I would also like to, as I requested before, but do it formally, the opportunity zone, putting together staff and commissioners, whether it's a formal meeting. But we need to start working on that sooner rather than later because this year will be ending much, you know, quickly if we do not get on that and take advantage of these things that we can do with our own county properties that are located in an opportunity zone. And I'm not sure what the needs are at this point, but let's, I'm sure we have a staff here that should have a full plan of what our needs are. And then, this is kind of weird, but it's housekeeping. It's one of those picky things that drive me a little nuts with my OCD. Can we get this clock to actually, above us, to reflect what the actual time is? It's a couple minutes ahead, and it bothers me. So I don't want to argue about it. It's just a request that I've made. Thank you. And as I said, I have to go. As far as I know, I asked if this meeting is still on, and I have not heard. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Jung. So it's too bad that the Gerlach cab people left because, to my knowledge, we don't get a million dollars from the feds. We've been working on this project. And I have asked. I have asked the manager to, please do not be rude, Vice Chair Jung, or we will cancel this meeting and walk out. I have asked the county manager to please provide us with information. We need to move 13 up before you leave. So we will move item 13 up right now. Mr. Manager.
I don't want to be rude, I got to go.
Sorry.
Madam Chair, item 13 does require four members of the board.
Then we, then obviously Vice Chair, Vice Chair Jung doesn't want to stay for it. So we'll have to change it to another time because she doesn't schedule her meetings appropriate to our.
Excuse me. I expected this meeting to be over far sooner than when it was.
Then you should have read your agenda.
Wow. That's lovely.
So with that, if you have time to stay, we will do 13 right now.
Why would I do you a favor with the way you've just spoken to me?
Leave.
You don't give me permission. You should run for mayor again.
Please forgive me, Mr. Manager and Mr. Liberelli. My behavior is inappropriate, and I would ask your forgiveness.
Absolutely.
So if we have time, let's do 13 right now.
Item 13 is a recommendation to adopt a resolution directing the clerk to notify the Washoe County Debt Management Commission of the county's proposal to issue its Washoe County Nevada General Obligation Limited Tax Sewer Bonds, additionally secured by pledged revenues in the maximum principal amount of $50 million for sewer projects. Provide certain details in connection therewith and providing the effective date thereof.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine Valetich, Assistant County Manager. This item is related to the item that the board heard last month on the state revolving fund loan for the sewer plant improvement. And the first step in that process is that we need to go to the Debt Management Commission of Washoe County. They have to approve this. And then we would come back to the board and start the process for the bond issuance. Because the way the state revolving fund loan program works is that we were able to get interest rates below market through that program, but we have to issue the bonds, and then the state purchases those on a private placement. So this is just the first step. This is a process that will take a number of months, coming back to the board several times. But we need to go to Debt Management Commission next month. They meet in February.
Thank you very much. Questions? Commissioner Hartong.
I don't have so much questions on the bond itself. I have questions on how the bond will be used. I think Mr. Solero would probably be the one. I don't see Mr. Smith in the audience. Thank you, Mr. Solero. So I know that we've been working for some time to upgrade the, some of the facilities, specifically the Huffaker Pond Lake Holding Facility.
Reservoir.
Reservoir, call it whatever you want. I know that we're redoing the lining so that we get less infiltration from that. I know we're also talking about potentially, or not potentially, but ultimately getting Stem Wharf to a Class A+ as part of this, which is, in my personal opinion, the only direction our community has to go with wastewater and treating wastewater to an extremely high standard. I mean, we just, we have to do it. We can no longer treat it as a disposable asset or a disposable item. So I know that a portion is going to that. But then there's also going to be an upgrade to this interceptor. Talk to me about that. How's that going to be paid for? How will that be reimbursed? Will people be forced to hook up to sewer? What's the, what are the ramifications of putting in an interceptor?
Sure, for the commissioners, through the chair, Dave Solero, Assistant County Manager. The interceptor work through, essentially Pleasant Valley, is work that we need to do on our end of current infrastructure that is already in place to upsize, to increase sizable pump station, to accept the sewage from a developer who is actually increasing or actually paying for
or actually paying for and providing the interceptor from their development to our current infrastructure.
Okay.
That is, that is being paid for by the developer, by the connections associated with that project.
Okay.
You know, this bond will be paid for through sewer rates that are already in place. No new people will be required to, you know, to, to hook up to this interceptor, you know, as we go through this process. This is a forced main interceptor. So, you know, there's, this isn't forcing anybody to, you know, to hook up through this process.
What will the alignment look like? Will it go down 395? Is it gonna, we're gonna have to deal with any, any properties? And maybe this isn't the proper time to talk about this. I know we're talking about funding right now, but, but, you know, there's, there's a number of...
One moment.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Vice Chair Jung does have another meeting that she needs to attend, and we do have three public comments. And isn't this coming back to us again to talk about alignment and all that? Commissioner Hartong couldn't...
Well, I know people came, people came to hear this specifically, so I want to make sure that they get an opportunity to, to, you know, to hear what the intent is, how the money is, is going to be garnered, how it will be spent. And so, I think it's, I think it's important. So, you, Madam Chair, the meeting is yours. You guide us.
If you think it's important and the public needs to know.
So, I do have an exhibit here that shows the alignment through Pleasant Valley. If we can get the overhead to show that very quickly. So, to orient, this is the interchange right here at the Mount Rose Highway. So, this is heading south down towards Carson City. The alignment for this project, you know, essentially files, follows Steamboat Creek, a portion of Old 395, and some current existing right-of-way that we, that we have for this project. So, there's a small portion that runs through existing right-of-way. I want to say that's the, kind of the Dorothy Town location. Oh, no, sorry. This is actually further along. This is Toll Road, highway up to Virginia City. So, this is existing location, Brown, the old Brown School, where the school district has their headquarters is right of way.
Okay.
I know where that's at.
Okay.
And Mr. Solero, may I get that picture for the record?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartong. I appreciate it. We do have three public comments, so could we move to public comment quickly? Good morning, Mr. Naylor.
Good morning, and thanks for the opportunity to speak. Commissioner Hartong, thank you very much for asking those questions. This is information that we should have had well before this meeting. Part of my speech here, and I'm kind of deviating from it, had to do with the fact that the citizens just found out about this two, three days ago. This should have been, there should have been a public meeting to show these maps, to explain exactly what was going on. The cab should have been advised. Again, the cab should get this kind of information. This is important to all the citizens in the South Truckee Meadows. So, we didn't get, we didn't get notice. I guess one of the things that, from what he said, it doesn't, it sounds like the developer is going to provide the funding for the actual interceptor, and that was one of the major concerns we had. And the, excuse me, the developer should, should do that. So, it looks to me like you're upgrading the infrastructure, the pump station and sewer lines, actually north of that point, to, to get actually up to the treatment facility. One of the comments I had was that a regional plan is currently in process. We feel that it's a kind of premature at this point to go out and ask for $50 million to upgrade facilities, although I, I might modify that a little bit based on what I found out, just found out, until that plan is done, because that plan is going to dictate the pattern of the growth for the Truckee Meadows for the next, whatever, 10 years, five, 10 years. My point was that most of the growth and, and the plans that I've seen tend to want to run north, not south. Therefore, we may not need an upgrade to the sewer plant, but again, this has kind of changed based on the information. I guess, I'm kind of short on time, but what I think the citizens would request is that this resolution be delayed until after the completion of the regional plan. At that point, if it's still needed, provide an expansion. It should be reworded to provide an expansion of sewer plants, any of them, as required by the regional plan, and to provide expansions of sewer infrastructure as needed by the regional plan. I don't think we should be focusing in on Pleasant Valley. We should give the county the flexibility to be able to do the changes they need based on where the growth is going to be according to the regional plan. And I would also like to see you hold appropriate workshops, coordinate through the cabs, so the citizens are involved and know exactly what's going on. This kind of thing really worries.
Thank you, Mr. Naylor.
Thank you.
Next is Ms. Ginger Pierce. Good morning, Ms. Pierce.
My name is Ginger Pierce. I'm the Pleasant Valley Steamboat Association President, and I have a map approved by the Water Department, and I have the original sewer book for you to look at later after the meeting. The Pleasant Valley Sewer Interceptor has been in the planning stage since 1980 by the Washoe County Department of Water Resources. It included alignment, wastewater flow, and construction costs. Phase 1 is located south of the Brookside Mobile Home Park. The sewer interceptor will be included various local and federal agencies. The Steamboat Restoration Committee, Steamboat Springs Water Works, Tom W., Army Corps of Engineers, Washoe County Department of Health, and possibly the U.S. Fish and Game Wildlife. The pipe size must be 15 inches, with the proposed depths varying from 10 to 26 feet, with a 20-foot wide sewer easement. The preliminary estimate price in 2005 was $4 million. The Steamboat Creek is designated as a perennial stream, which requires a 300-foot setback. And I have these information and the map. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pierce. Mr. Sam Dena.
Sam Dena, Dena, the heart and soul and body and mind of Reno government. I'll try to be brief. I know Ms. Jung is in a hurry, but this should be, this should be, should be given a whole meeting for itself for folks out in TV land, and I agree with Mr. Naylor and Ms. Pierce, this is a $50 million. Fifty mil... Of course, it may not be that much money to some people. $50 million is a lot of money, and it's for sewer project, projects, plural, singular, I don't know what. And I'm not going to go into a lot of depth on it, but I do have one issue that is number at the top. They've got their issues, and I've got my issue that is widespread, and it is the sewer project, which includes effluent water. And those people over there, those million, billionaires over in Tahoe Reno Industrial Complex want us to provide them with millions of dollars of effluent cleaned up, that's like cleaned up water that you can use. They want us to provide them with millions of dollars of effluent water. I'm against that. And they also want us to build a $100 million pipeline to send the water over there. I'm adamantly against that. The media wacko freaks are hiding this issue, because they're probably on the payroll of the Tahoe Reno Industrial Complex, and I could almost prove it that if I had enough resources. There should, we should not be, we should not be sending any effluent water over to Don Roger Norman, Lance Gilman, and all of his Googling buddies over there who are billionaires. They should be paying for their own wa... They should be paying us for the water. Instead, they want us to spend money sending them our effluent water, or who knows what kind of water. Any questions of that? I'm sorry that Ms. Jung is being held up. I know she's got an important meeting to go to, so I'll cut my time short.
Mr. Dena, seeing no more public comment, we'll bring it back to the board. Commissioners, action. Commissioner Hartong.
Madam Chair, well, I, I respect the, the requests to delay. Only a small piece, I don't, I don't want to say a small piece, but only a piece of this is the interceptor, which is coming in the future. And I think that we'll, we'll see more on that, and we can talk about that. The upgrades to stem wharf, regardless of whether we get the, the regional plan update this month, next month, six months from now, that still needs to be done. We've got to get that plant to a higher standard. We've got to seal the reservoir. That, that's an imperative. I mean, we know that those things need to be done. We need to lead the way in clean water in, in the region. My other fear with, with delaying this is the bonds themselves and the cost of the bonds. They could be cheaper, but they could be more expensive. It, it, it's an unknown, and that's the, that's the part that is of concern to me. So, I would make a motion that we approve this.
Hold on. Vice Chair Jung.
Yes, I have a question. Is there a deadline, or are we putting ourselves in a deadline to get this, whatever this fantastic bond rate is? And what is the bond rate? And what, how has the bond fluctuated, the ratings, over the last quarter, let's say?
There's a process to be started that will take a number of months. So, even if you approve this today and we're able to go to the Debt Management Commission, we still have to come back with a resolution of intent of the board, a 90-day waiting period. And then, at the very end of that is when the agreement with the state revolving fund for the loan is actually signed, and the rate is set at that time.
So, does this have to be decided today, is my question? Could this wait until actually the full board was here? Because maybe Commissioner Lucy didn't look at his agenda either.
We're just trying to time it so the Debt Management Commission needs a quarter.
I'd rather the full board be here. To buy and bond us out for $50 million, $50 million, correct? With an M or a B?
Yeah.
With an M. For $50 million, I think the full board should be here, frankly. And I also think that the public probably needs to be communicated with, because as far as I understand from your presentation, there's no specific plans at this point other than getting the money for, to then map out what our plans are. Because if there are plans, let me just finish. If there are plans, I believe that the whole county taxpayers should be aware of the plans if we're going to bond their money out, and specifically what neighborhoods. This may or may not change. And I do get the fear, I used to represent Golden Valley. Their biggest fear was Tom W. coming out into their valley and then forcing hookups. I don't know if that's good or bad resource management, but I know that it has been the harbinger for further density and developments in these areas. And I do want to state for the record as well, the Regional Planning Governing Board not having its master plan does make me a little nervous in terms of us doing future-forward predictions. And I, I want to ask before you answer, when is the new master plan expected to come to fruition? Any subject matter experts up here? I think we have three people on the board, don't we?
Hopefully, we will have it in major draft form in the next month, and it should be before...
So, could we wait? What would you say would be the, instead of answering those questions, would there be harm in waiting one more commission meeting?
No, there wouldn't. We're just trying to time it. We do have to go to Debt Management Commission to start the process.
Got it.
And at that time, you're not making a decision on any kind of financing. They meet on the 15th of February, so we could come back to you on the 12th, and we're happy to do that. And then, as far as the public process, like I've mentioned, it's about a four-month process at least. So, we'll be coming back in terms of the financing.
Sure.
Several times. On December 12th...
So, what does this mean to today, Mr. Liberelli? Adopt a resolution to notify the Debt Management to issue a gen op. So, we, it is saying, issue these general obligation bonds, correct?
Madam Chair, for Vice Chair Jung, as Ms. Valetich has explained, the process of getting approval for revolving fund bonds is, is a long one. This is an initial step, sending it to the Debt Management Commission for its initial screening. Once the Debt Management Commission has decided that the county has sufficient revenues and doesn't impair other municipalities from issuing debt and all the things debt management does, they approve it, and then it comes back for approval by the Board of County Commissioners before any debt gets issued. So, the, the importance of today's meeting is to notify the Debt Management Commission that a proposal to incur debt has been made, and then the process...
Got it. And to notice, and do all of those things. So, let me, can I, I will approve this with the caveat that when you come back to us with the specifics, that there's the community outreach and engagement. Before I will, in any way, with my one vote out of five, commit taxpayers to $50 million without being able to explain to them exactly where it's going to go and for what.
Absolutely.
But I am in support of it if we can move that forward with those, oh, and also being informed by the regional plan, so that we make decisions. And I'm not saying that I need to know the whole structure of the regional plan. There's three of you on that for a reason. Bring it back with the, with that caveat that we're getting that done and we're working in, in coordination at the very least. I know that the regional plan has a different mode and goal than we do, but I am concerned about obligating people to debt that I don't understand.
Thank you, Vice Chair Jung. And I am for the maker of the motion. I'm in full support of what Vice Chair Jung has asked the amendment to your motion B. I also have some concerns about what we're doing, and I also think it's inappropriate to have this before this board when Commissioner Lucy, whose district this is in, is not here to comment on it. So, we want to make sure that we get a full public hearing, not a rushed public hearing, and we move forward. Commissioner Hartong.
So, Commissioner Jung is...
That's a second.
That's a second.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's, that's, okay. Under discussion, Madam Chair. One of the things that I want brought back is that how this is repaid. Who actually pays for it? Is it people with septic systems? Is it... Exactly. I, I see you shaking your head. And that's, that's what, that's what, you know, and again, I, I recognize, and, and perhaps I'm the only one in the room, that we have to get ourselves to a point where we are cleaning our water to a Class A plus standard.
680 South Rock Boulevard.
We're...now?
Oops.
We're not going to Rock Boulevard just yet.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
So, under, under...
Hold on a minute. Go ahead, Commissioner Hartong.
No, that's, that's all I have under discussion. I, I want it brought back of how you're going to spend the funds, the timing with which you will spend those funds. What's going to trigger things like the interceptor going in and spending those funds? And I, I, I understand completely the long-drawn-out process for bonding, but sewer is one of the most important... People think water is the most important. I would beg to differ. It's actually sewer.
I have to vote.
So, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for indulgence, Commissioner Jung.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hartong, for clarification's sake, though, your motion was to approve the clerk sending the resolution to the Debt Management Commission?
Correct.
Okay.
And then Commissioner Jung asked for some amendments for things to come back.
Right.
And the maker of the motion agrees.
Mr. Liberelli.
And the adoption of the resolution.
And the adoption of the resolution. Thank you, Mr. Liberelli.
Correct. Okay, with that, we've done public comment. We have no more comments, so we have a motion, a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please vote on your screen and affirm your vote up above. Motion carries 4-0 with Senator, with Commissioner Bob Lucy absent. Thank you, Vice Chair Jung, for your time. Okay, with that, we will go back to...
Do you need a block vote? But I don't know if you want to...
I do.
Do you want to...
Yeah.
Correct the donations.
Yeah. Since, would you like to do the donations, Commissioner Hartong?
If you have.
Okay.
I, I didn't prepare myself for this, but I can easily read this. "Donations are, accept a cash donation of $14,999, and in-kind donations, estimated value $80,200, from various businesses and organizations, individuals for regional parks and open space facilities." Thank you so much. Item 8A2 is a recommendation to accept cash donation of $200,000 from the Vera Silberstein Gift Trust for the improvements of Bauer's Mansion, and direct the Comptroller's Office to make the appropriate budget amendments. Again, thank you so much for that. That's, that's amazing. Item 8B1 is acknowledge various items donated to the Washoe County Human Services Agency for Children in Foster Care, and accept cash donations to... for Children in Foster Care and accept cash donations to Washoe County Human Services Agency in the amount of $27,685 retroactive for the period of November 1st through December 25th, 2018. And of course, direct the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary changes. And recommend the acceptance of a cash donation for the Human Services Fund in the amount of $1,830 retroactive for the period of November 1st to November 25th. Also directing the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary changes. Recommendation to accept the one-time in-kind appreciation gift, a 300 tri-tip individual meals, estimated value of $6,000 from a private citizen to the Washoe County Sheriff's Office. Thank you so very, very much. Wish I was there to have one of those. 8C2 is recommendation to accept a donation of $25 from Robert and Diana Wellums to the Washoe County, to Washoe County on behalf of the Washoe County Sheriff's Office to purchase equipment for the K-9 unit. Couldn't do it without you guys. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
And is that in the form of a motion?
That is.
Do I have a second?
You do.
I see no public comment. Madam Clerk, do you have any public comment on any of this?
No.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Please cast your vote on the screen and affirm your vote above. Motion carries three nothing with both Commissioner Lucy and Commissioner and Vice Chair Jung absent. And we will move on to item nine.
Item nine is a proclamation. This is item 9A proclaiming the month of January as National Radon Action Month. And I believe Commissioner Herman is here to read that proclamation. And we do have, we do have folks here to accept this proclamation and to give us a
Washoe County, Nevada proclamation. Whereas many Washoe County residents don't know about radon, yet need to know, for the safety and health of their families, as radon is a colorless, odorless, naturally occurring radioactive gas that is the primary cause of lung cancer among non-smokers, the second leading cause of lung cancer in smokers, and whereas the U.S. EPA estimates 21,000 people in the United States die each year from lung cancer caused by indoor radon exposure. And lung and bronchus cancer kill more people in a year than any other cancer. And whereas radon kills more people than secondhand smoke, driving, and home fires combined. And whereas any home in Washoe County may have elevated levels of radon, even if neighboring homes do not. And living in a home with an average radon level of four picocaries, I hope I didn't murder that one, per liter of air poses a similar risk of developing lung cancer as smoking half a pack of cigarettes a day. And whereas testing is the only way to know if a home has an elevated radon level. And testing is easy and inexpensive. And when identified, homes can be fixed. And whereas University of Nevada Cooperative Extension, the Nevada Division of Public and Behavioral Health, and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency support efforts to encourage all Washoe County residents to test their homes for radon, mitigate elevated levels of radon, and have new homes built with radon-reducing materials and features. Now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim January 2019 as National Radon Action Month, dated this 15th day of January 2019, signed by Marsha Burke Vigler, Chair of Washoe County Commission.
Thank you for reading that so well.
Oh, thank you.
I'm going to say a few words and then I probably will get a pitch with you guys, I'm guessing.
Okay.
Could I have the overhead projector? Okay, thank you for the opportunity to present information about radon and National Radon Action Month. This proclamation, your support of our service, is especially important for all of the proclamation states because testing is the only way to know if you were radon issue. And January is National Radon Action Month. The University of Nevada Cooperative Extension is again offering free test kits to all Nevadans from now until the end of February. Locally, residents can get a free test kit from the Cooperative Extension Office in Washoe County, Incline Rec Village, or Sun Valley GID. This first overhead flyer is just the presentations we have listed and the locations to pick up a test kit. We do have more flyers if you'd like one. We actually have a presentation tonight at Spanish Springs Library. So if you're interested in learning more about radon, you can attend. It's at 5:30 PM. The next handout is a radon potential map for Washoe County. Okay, there you go. So testing is especially important in Washoe County, where 22% of the homes that have been tested have an elevated level of radon, so those four picocaries per liter of air or more. The highest level found in Washoe County is in zip code 89509, and that level was 195 picocaries per liter of air, which is almost 49 times the action level. The average radon level in Washoe County is 3.4 picocaries per liter of air, which is almost three times more the average indoor level nationally. For it, it has the highest radon potential for our county, at 47% of the homes tested having elevated level. And their average radon level is 10.10 picocaries per liter of air. Every home needs to be tested because any home can have a different radon level, and you can't base your level off of your neighbor's levels or any statistics or maps. Some other statistics for our county is that more than 25,000 test kits have been given out and more than half of them have been used. That has resulted in 31% of the homes that need to be mitigated for radon actually being fixed. More than 1,600 homes have been tested in real estate transactions, and more than 100 homes have been built radon-resistant. Every home needs to be tested, so we encourage you to spread the word about radon and the free test kits we're offering along with the presentations. For more information about radon, you can visit www.radonnv or call our hotline, which is 1-888-RADON-10. You can also find us on Facebook at Nevada Radon Education or on Twitter at NVRadonProgram. We do have test kits here today, so if you're interested in picking up a test kit, you can find Susan, who's seated right there with the camera, or myself, and we can get you a test kit, as well as, again, we have those flyers. Thank you for your support, and we appreciate it.
And Madam, before you leave the microphone, could you state your name for the record, please?
Oh, Nadia N O L with Nevada Radon Education Program.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you very much for coming here today. Appreciate it. And we usually with certificates do pictures, so should we do a picture?
Vanity. Cover it up. Yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Manager, I don't believe we've done the consent agenda, have we?
We have not.
Madam Chair, we need a motion on number nine.
Yes, I know we do, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm looking for a motion to approve this asked item. Do we have any public comment?
No, ma'am.
I see none, so, okay, I'm looking for a motion. We have a motion and a second. And, yes. Yeah, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And opposed? Please cast your vote on the screen and affirm your vote up above. Motion passes three nothing with Commissioners Lucy and Vice Chair Jung absent. And let's move on to the consent agenda, item 10. Mr. Manager.
Item 10 is your consent agenda. We have two items today, item 10A and 10B. I would note, I guess I'll do this, on item 10A, this is a recommendation for special district funds for Commissioner Lucy in the amount of $5,000, $2,000 to Second Judicial District Court to support the Reading Room Project. A $1,500 grant to the Friends of Washington Library to support STEAM initiatives at South Valley's library. And $1,500 grant to the Friends of Washington Library to support Washington Library Systems' gift, give the gift of reading.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manager. I don't see any public comment. Madam Clerk, do you have any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion and a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Please cast your vote on, oh, no, we don't cast our vote on the screen for this. Affirm your vote above. Motion passes three nothing with Commissioner Lucy and Vice Chair Jung absent. Mr. Manager, I believe we have a block vote.
What is the recommendation?
The recommendation is 11 and 14.
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Manager, and I have a motion again.
I, just with some comments on 12, I'm moving certain... Do that.
Yeah, sure.
But I would have some comments on 12. When you're ready, Madam Chair, let me know.
Okay, well, let the manager read them and then we'll do comments.
What items are in the block?
So we're doing 11, 12, and 14.
Thank you.
Item 11 is a recommendation to award Washington County bid number 3072-19 and approve the janitorial services agreement for various buildings to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. Staff recommends Qual Econ USA in the amount of $13,511.67 per month. And authorize the purchasing and contracts manager to execute a three-year agreement effective February 1, 2019, with two additional one-year renewal options on behalf of Washoe County. Estimated annual value is $162,144.0 plus cost for callback. Item 12 is a recommendation to adopt a resolution declaring Washoe County's intent to convey the Washoe County School District, to the Washoe County School District, a portion of the property commonly known as the Wild Creek Golf Course on Sullivan Lane in Sparks, Nevada, and setting a date for a hearing at which objections can be heard and other matters properly related thereto. And that hearing date would be February 12, 2019. Item 14 is a recommendation to award request for proposal number 3069-19 for the Washoe County Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan update to the most responsive and responsible bidder. Ecology and Environment Incorporated in the amount of $256,131. And if approved, authorize the purchasing and contracts manager to execute the contract.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I didn't see any public comment on any of those.
No, ma'am.
We have no public comment. Vice Chair, I mean, sorry. Commissioner Hartong.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
It's been one of those mornings.
It has, I understand. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak and just ask the questions. On item 12 specifically, some of the things that I want to see the Washington County School District bring back is what's going to happen with the orphaned piece of the golf course? How are we going to deal with that? What will occur there? Because it will be dramatically reduced, and I'm just curious as to how we're going to deal with that. I don't know, Mr. Liparelli, if we can ask them to bring other things back, like how we're going to deal with flooding, what's going to happen with your ditch, what will happen with Sullivan Lane, because those are also issues with the city of Sparks. So I don't know whether it's in our purview to ask those questions for it to come back to us.
Madam Chair, the contemplation of the parties working on this transaction include having a comprehensive cooperative agreement for the board to entertain at the time of the approval of the land transfer. The cooperative agreement will spell out the rights and obligations of the parties as to water rights, effluent, planning approvals, discretionary use of the remainder parcels. Some of the questions that maybe commissioners have can be raised at that time before the approval of the transfer.
Thank you, Mr. Liparelli. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted it on the record.
You are welcome, and we have no public comment. So all those in favor of the block vote as read and initiated, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion, please cast your vote on the screen and then affirm your vote above.
Madam Chair, was Commissioner Herman the second on that vote?
Yes, she was.
Thank you. Now you can cast your vote.
Okay, cast your vote, please, and then affirm your vote above. Motion carries three nothing with Commissioner Lucy and Vice Chair Jung absent. Thank you very much. And with that, we will move to, I guess we're moving to item 15.
Yes, Madam Chair, item 15 is our possible closed session, and we will need that. So I think what we should do is we'll move on to item 16, public comment. We will have item 17. Then we will recess for our closed session and make the motion to do that properly when we do that.
Okay, thank you.
So item 16 is, public comment heard on this item is limited to three minutes per person, may obtain demand as both on and off the commission agenda. Commission also hears public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person, and comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I see no one listed on my list. Madam Clerk, do you have anyone? Okay, we have no public comment, so we'll close public comment and bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager.
That takes us to item 17, which is our final Commissioner County Manager's announcements.
Do you have anything, Mr. Manager?
Not this time.
Commissioners, anything? Okay, then in that case, we will close item 17, and we will be in, we have to take a vote, right? So we need to take a vote to go to closed session?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to go to closed session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, are we casting, cast your vote on the screen and affirm your vote above. Motion passes three nothing with Commissioner Lucy and Vice Chair Jung absent. And with that, we will be in recess. With that, we will be in recess. Okay.